Of what, I mean, I'm intrigued by the first responder training.
Mm-hmm.
What does that entail?
Well.
Generally.
It was just that we, it was a short version. What we would like to be able to do, but it is difficult, is to be able to provide a more[16.82][16.82]intensive training for first responders around mental health, being able to identify what are the signs and symptoms of individuals and how do you access and connect them with services so that first responders, when they're on a scene, might, something that might be exhibiting as a behavior that may be as defiant against an officer is actually a symptom of a mental illness and how do you, how can you recognize that and how do you connect people with services. But it's really a very brief version. And the challenge is because trying to have law enforcement pulling them off the road or even first responders who have a need to meet the community's needs. And this training, I believe it was like a four-hour training, half a day training.
Okay.
To be, to be a little bit more blunt, okay? Officers have had, quite frankly, dumped on them because the federal government has been so pathetic and the state government's been so pathetic at taking care of the mentally ill. They get dumped on having to deal with these folks. Now, I'll give you two examples. My son Kevin, okay? Years ago, he pulled out in front of a semi and was lucky he wasn't killed. And he got clipped, okay? But when the officer showed up, okay, the officer, perfectly all right, said to Kevin, why don't you go sit in the back of my car until we get this straightened out? And Kevin just went berserk. No, 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 you're gonna take me to jail, you're never gonna, I'm never gonna get out and so on and so forth. And he just lost it, okay? And the guy handled it really well. He just said, okay, we'll just stay here and so on and so forth. Another instance, when I was on the Mental Health Commission, we talked with the president of the community college up in Alpena, and his daughter had mental illness issues. And she got stopped by the police and she did a similar thing to what Kevin did. And they ended up handcuffing her, putting her in the back of the car, okay? And she went to jail and so on and so forth. Well, it's easy, Mr. Commissioner, to say, no, you shouldn't do that. But when you're an officer and you've had no training and you don't know what's wrong, that's a natural reaction. Because you don't know if this person's on drugs, you don't know if they're, you know, on meth or heroin or whatever else. So you can't blame the officer. So the purpose of this is to get the officers trained so that when they run into these types of situations, they can recognize it for what it is and then react more accordingly. Okay? As it stands right now with a lot of places, it's hit or miss. If you happen to be a Kevin in that situation, it was handled really well. If you happen to be the person up in Alpena, it wasn't handled well. But you can't expect someone to understand how to handle the mentally ill and the mentally impaired if you don't give them training and work with them. So that's, that's the essence.
And no fault of the officers because that's what they're trained to do. I mean, they, you know, they wouldn't have known any different relative to that individual. So, any other questions of any of the commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I talked to you about the fact that out at the sheriff's office, the person that you've placed out there using office supplies and everything, did that?
I believe that-
Did you want to get a bill for that?
I think what we, I think we agree that we would provide our own office supplies. I'd have to follow up with Shannon, but I thought it was taken care of.
Going back to the first of the year, did they get a bill for that, Sheriff?
No, we're just, we're just moving forward to make a different assessment.
Okay. Now, the second question is, you also indicated that through the mental health millage money, you could pay for the psychotropic and the psychotic drug.
Yeah, we've been paying for that. That was not, I did not write that in here, did I? Nope. But that was included. We did get a bill for some of the medications, yes.
Was that retroactive back to the first of the year?
Yeah, it's retroactive to the first of the year.
Okay.
We did get an invoice and we've paid it.
So that part is being paid for through them, okay.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing that I asked before, and forgive me, I don't remember, but you told me that if, if there's adults that have mental health issues, they can go out on Care Drive to your, and you'll take care of them, regardless whether they got money or not.
Yeah.
Okay. So if a parent has a kid who is suffering from a mental illness and can't get help for them, they can take them to Care Drive, you guys will treat them and get them into appropriate programs. Is that correct?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So I just want to emphasize that to everybody. Because I've seen a lot of parents over the years that can't get any help. And I just ran into another situation over Branch County. And they can't get help. But our parents here can get help.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay? So I want to emphasize that to the commissioners and on our TV and everything else. If you're having problems, get them out there like to-
Yeah. And if there's any struggles or any challenges, I need to know about it. And that's the same thing that I've been telling Jackson, stakeholders as well. If you're, if you bring somebody in and you're having struggles with getting them connected with services, it needs to be brought to my attention.
Okay. And then the only other thing, paid political announcement? 298 was an attempt at the state level by certain individuals to privatize mental health in Michigan. Michigan has probably the best public mental health system in the country. There is no reason to destroy it. To destroy it would be foolish and, quite frankly, inane. And it's come to an end for right now. But no idea in Lansing or Washington ever dies, okay? They just get reincarnated in different forms. The issue that's being used is that if somebody goes to Lifeways for mental health issues, they should also be able to get physical health issues taken care of at the same place. And so the only way to do that was to get rid of all the CMHs and move everything into the Medicaid HMOs which deal with physical health issues. Well, there is an alternative to that. And Lifeways is doing an excellent job in moving in the direction of offering the physical health care right on campus where they offer the mental health care. So we can maintain the best public mental health system in the country by simply moving physical health care into it. And we're doing that. Lifeways, I think, is probably ahead of the curve on a lot of other CMHs. Is that fair, Mary Beth?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's happening. So don't fall for that argument. And I, I started to hear rumblings of term limits again. We want to end term limits. You know, we've got to do something different with term limits. Because term limits is the cause of all the world's problems. Everything that's happened that's bad is term limits. Well, you hear this every four years when people in Lansing are getting ready to get termed out. I can tell you from experience, when they got elected the first time and previous guys got termed out, they thought term limits were great. And somehow, that attitude changes as you progress through the system. Well, when you have a bad idea, like 298, okay? The beauty of term limits is the people that came up with those bad ideas, you can get rid of them, okay? And I just use that as an example. It could be some other example. But move on. There's a lot of smart people in Michigan. Don't let them get rid of term limits. Because things like this can be ended and not hurt a lot of people. Thank you.
I just had a question. In regards with, you know, comparison with Hillsdale and Jackson, do you know the percent of the Care Drive in Hillsdale versus with Jackson?
If you mean the overall, I don't know what the percent is. I could get you numbers. We break, we break out on our annual report the number of people served annually. The funding for the millage is separate. It, it's not combined.
It's separate?
So, no, it's a separate, the funding and the use of those dollars is specifically for Hillsdale County and the same for Jackson County's millage.
Yeah. Another thing is, when you talked about the school district and you do the 20% cash match, just kind of put some light on that, just for the public's sake as well.
Yeah, so, like included in the report, that equaled 59,000 of the dollars for the millage, which drew down about a 260, 260 total for the community to be able to utilize for mental health support. Now, the Hillsdale ISD is the one that chose how they're going to utilize that. Now, they partnered with Lifeways, were a part of the discussions about how do you want to utilize those dollars for mental health supports in the schools? And they, the schools had to submit a proposal to Hillsdale ISD about how they would utilize it and how much they needed. So there's a variety of schools. I think there's about six schools that are utilizing this, this funding to do things around the prevention and education. So providing safe talk training for students around suicide awareness and education. Mental health first aid youth, which teaches both students and teachers and anybody in the school system could be, you know, the lunch people, the bus drivers around how do you identify that a student is having mental health issues? And then where are the resources in the community to connect them to that? So that's what they're utilizing. And they're using it on the first tier, if you will, is a term that's utilized in education around mental health. There's three tiers. The first tier being prevention and education. And that's where they're focusing those dollars in Hillsdale County.
Great, great, great work, Mary Beth. Thanks.
Excuse me. Any other questions for Mary Beth?
Good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, put me on the agenda for next month because I'm going to be presenting the proposal back for, for next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You can do that. Thank you. Would you like the first meeting or second meeting, Mary Beth?
Uh, probably the second meeting. Second meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Terry.
Good morning.
You and Wendy are up next.
All righty. Right, running on schedule.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, Terry.
Thanks.
Let's, let's introduce the board member too when you get on.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
So, always a pleasure to be here. And I have Wendy Crawford, who is our Director of Operations. We did some organizational restructuring. So prior to Director of Operations, she was Finance Director. Also have one of our, well, two, County Ruth, Commissioner Brown, that Sandra Duffer is on our board. So just wanted to let you know with the packet that you have, we are already on the agenda for February. Worked that out with, with Marnie. We just completed our audit last week. That's always a fun time, especially for Wendy. And so probably they will be presenting at our December report on that. So when I come back in February, our fiscal year ends the end of September. We are a crunchy number, so you'll have, in addition to the audit, you'll have the service data report on the clients served. Before you, you have, as we have done in the past, and it is the Fiscal Year 2019 Actual. So that first page shows where we originally planned to use those millage dollars and then where we eventually allocated those millage dollars. Now, originally planned, of course, is in the red. And then goes to, goes down through each category within regards to our three, kind of over of the umbrella, Community Connections, Home-Based Services, and Life Enrichment. And so we did see an increase in total with the number of clients we served for fiscal year 19. 2,578 actual number of units for the year were, and if you look back to page, these aren't numbered, but your fourth page, it has a services breakout. And that is a three-year comparison with regards to, you're not seeing it on the front page, the breakout with adult daycare, our Meals on Wheels, our, all of our programs. We have close to 30 programs. So you'll see in comparison, the number of clients served between '17, '18, '19, what that change was and the units. We have, seen an increase in our adult daycare and the number of people using it. And a side note, if you go down, well, yeah, if you go down to, I thought I circled it, our emergency shelter, I did want to clarify that with our polar vortex, and here we are coming into the snowy weather once again, last year, that we provide emergency shelter. We are a designated American Red Cross disaster site. Now, I want to make it clear that Doug Sanford calls whether we should open as an emergency disaster site. He's the one that calls in this county. It's not the senior center. And so last year, as you know, we had some pipes bust and we had the polar vortex and we still had a skeleton crew even though we announced, for example, our Meals on Wheels were canceled. All of our Meals on Wheels clients have emergency meals that they're able to use. We also pretty, go over and above, in my opinion, we called them. I was out the, the day before behind in the snow, I remember one day, and we had people out until six making sure they had those meals, checking on them. I just asked who was with me when we went out in teams. Is that the driveway? Because I'm going through. So it was, it was, I enjoyed it. But we do, we, we oftentimes follow the county. If the county closes, then we can, we close. We don't always do that. But we do have a skeleton crew on backup. So there are people, for example, the one day we canceled our congregate meals, we still had kitchen staff in. We had about, probably about 12 seniors that came in for lunch. And I went over to the table and I said, you know, because we always have something, we've said, we'll get people here, we'll have something to serve them. I said, you know, we're not really serving lunch today. And one of the reasons we closed is because the risk of fall. And there's ice and you fall and break a hip. Your mortality rate, especially over the age of 75, is dramatically, goes down. And they all looked at each other and said, and we're all over that age. Exactly. So I said, we're on the radio, we are on Facebook, we, we try to let you know when we do close. And one of the things was not getting you out in this really, really cold weather in addition to the risk of fall. So just wanted to clarify because I know last year I spent considerable amount of time following all of the different changes we made in our programs, educating people. Because they said, well, you're American Red Cross and, and you need to open. And really, that is Doug Sanford's call. So in addition to the, we are running right now on an interim budget until December. And then we will have final approval on our budget for 2020. We've had, one of the things that you'll see on that front page in the last year was, is a, under operations, is a $59,000 capital expenditure. And before you ask me the question, I will just let you know that, that 59,000 includes card readers in our respite center. We had some elopement risks. So doors, two of the doors, inside doors, they can't get through those doors unless they have a key fob because of the elopement risk with our respite clients who have dementia diagnosis and sometimes they just want to go. So that was a safety measure. We added new shades in our dining room. We had a new transmission, put in our Vehicle 5. We had security alarms for our freezer installed. We had a situation, I want to say it was Memorial Day, it might have been Labor Day, it was a Monday, that we lost some food because the temperature dropped. We had a, something go awry that needed repair. So we lost about $500 worth of food. And this was following-
I think it was presidency.
Was it presidency?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And so now, if the temperature goes above a certain temperature for the walk-in cooler and, both of them, really, it's, it's texted, technology, it's a wonderful thing. So that our Food Services Director is notified, our Maintenance, our Facilities Coordinator is notified. We also, I don't need to tell you, there's been a dramatic increase in bedbugs in, just in the area. And so we did purchase a bedbug chamber. So any of our equipment loan stuff that goes through, that gets donated to us, automatically goes into the bedbug chamber. It's a pretty big thing, can hold probably two sofas. And then also, if we have clients who are in a respite care, who we also do home-based services for, we go ahead and take some of that furniture in our respite care down, put it in the bedbug chamber. So it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice way to cheer bedbugs from coming to perennial park. We also have, quarterly, we have a bedbug sniffing dog, which is amazing. I thought it'd be this big dog. It's this little, it's this little dog. We were able to purchase, we've had a lot more donations where we didn't have a trailer and to pick it up, we'd always have to borrow one. So we had a good deal on a trailer hitch. We did purchase a 2019 Chevy Colorado Rogue HR2 half rack. It's a physical fitness piece of equipment. And additionally, a rower. Those two items, even though they're in that 59,000, that was a donation. And then some of our new vehicles, but that was that 59,000 in capital expenditures. The income statement, it, I don't have to go through it. I could let Wendy talk about that on our income statement if you'd like to look at, or to look at the income statement, which begins on page three. Well, really, it begins on the back, begins on page two.
Yeah. They have both the balance and the income statement. I don't know what you want me to say about it. Year-to-date, so, actually, if we look, I didn't bring the actual to budget. We were, we were below budget for revenues. We didn't hit our targets. But we were below expenses by even more. So we worked out okay. I'm sorry, I don't have, hold on, prepare here. We ended up with a net income of $257,000, which sounds like a lot. But we have bond payments of $280,000 last year, as well as the almost $60,000 that went out on capital expenditures, not to mention all the repairs that went into the, into the van.
And perennial park, because we-
And perennial park, yeah.
Had several last year.
So at the end of the year, we were sitting pretty good as far as cash-wise. Hopefully, we won't have to hit our credit line before our millage dollars start coming in. Balance sheet, as you can see, we, we ended the year with $639,000 in cash, which is, sounds like a lot. But part of that was a bond payment that was due, was due November 1st. We get rid of it October 31st, we give it to you guys. And we also had restricted and designated assets. So we had about $85,000, $86,000 there, so. And operations, we, we use about, about $150,000 to $200,000 a month in between payroll and payable. So $639,000, sounds like a lot, but unless we have any other money coming in, it's not really a lot, so.
What about these awesome graphs, Wendy?
Questions on the income or balance sheet first?
Okay.
Okay. This is just, I put these together because sometimes, I love numbers, of course, because I'm a nerd, but y'all, not everybody loves numbers like me. So I like to put graphs together. So you can see here that the represent, the, yours are, okay, start there, combine.
Yours didn't look colored either. I'm looking at your color.
2017, 2018, 2019, different colors. You can see 2019 for adult daycare, we're just rocking it. We are just, it's just, our adult daycare is just going strong. Our overnight rest, that we did have to stop offering overnight rest at the beginning of our fiscal year last year because of personnel issues. But we started that back up in, I'm going to say probably June is when we actually started, got enough personnel to, to be able to staff safely. And since June, we've had about 35 overnights, so, or 30, 33 overnights. So we're going good there. The rest of our services, we're, we're down. We are slightly down respite. In-home respite and adult daycare do this usually. If, if adult daycare is high, then in-home is usually low, so.
Aside comment on the home care, though, we lost two longstanding private pay. Our mission, of course, we're a nonprofit, so we're a little bit different from Jackson and Lenawee in that they're under the umbrella of the county. And we, we are, we function as the Department on Aging for the County. However, we are a private nonprofit. And if you look in the phone book, you'll still see us under the county departments within Hillsdale County. But in home care, we have two individuals particularly, private pay, who we were providing easily 25 hours a week, two at least, 28. And so those, our mission is to keep people at home. And so while we don't necessarily celebrate the passing of people if they stayed at home, until they did pass, then to us, that is a success because they were able to remain at home for that. So that's part of the, the home care dip in numbers there as far as the units go as well.
Do you know, do you know why respite has gone down since 2017? I know you said, I know that there's been change in personnel and staff, I know that. But do you know any other reason why this may have-
One is-
It started out really strong in 2017 in the home.
Right. One is the per-unit reimbursement rate. But the respite in-home too is, it is a trend and the respite has that caregiver component where we go in. Our respite dollars are nowhere, our grant dollars are nowhere near. In fact, it's small in comparison to our home care.
Right.
And so while that looks substantially less, we just try to encourage to go into, they have to have that caregiver. That's to go into the home and provide a break for the caregiver.
Right. But we also, at the same time, offer onsite respite. So if they can drop them off for the day, it's, it's better for the, for the caregiver-y, right? Because they have the socialization, they have the structure, so.
And the other piece is adult daycare and respite, that's a SHEETS funding.
Yeah.
And so we're able, for example, last year, we were able to move a substantial amount from our respite when that wasn't being used as much into our adult daycare fund, which is very helpful that we're allowed to do that. The funding's a little bit different because that's not older Americans act specific, even though it is funneled through Aging and Adult Services from the state, so. And then, of course, our congregate pretty much stayed the same. Our Meals on Wheels in unit-wise has, has increased from 2018. And part of our loan numbers, again, in 2018, what were the implement weather days because we had several more snow days, even though they had the emergency meals. Part of that is attributed to the days we had to close.
Right. And part of it is just the population, so.
Yeah. Wendy and I were talking about this, the fact that we're also seeing, I believe, a decrease because we've got the frail elder population, 85 and older. But people are taking care of themselves better, in my opinion. And so as we lose those frail elders, we don't have the baby boomers coming in as quickly as some of that next generation of people did. So, which is a good thing.
And I think this is, that's a trend, really.
Yeah.
Nationally.
Right. The, the other two are just our income composition as far as where our funding comes from, that pretty little pie sheet. And as you can see, more than half of our funding comes from our millage. And then we have donations, we have, again, private pay and then our federal-state grants. We have some third-party contracts we were able to get last year, I believe it was last year, it might have been 2018, but the Veterans Administration.
Was it, yeah, at the end.
At the end of the year?
This is really our first full year with veterans, so.
Right. Which is great.
Right. We just, we just picked up a PACE contract, contract with PACE. We also picked up a contract with Mobile Meals out of Toledo to order some meals up here, so.
Insurance is looking more, makes sense. Some of the supplemental insurance companies are looking more at providing things like the fitness center membership, meals now, looking at the home care. Because it makes sense, it's cheaper if, if there are services in the home, that the individual might be less likely to have an unnecessary hospital admittance, so. And I think you're going to see more and more of that moving forward. The, just a couple, are there any other questions on this report?
Yes, I do. I'm looking at the income composition, that big, pretty colorful circle there, and I see millage versus the federal-state fund of what we're getting percent-wise, percent-wise, looks like it's 16%. What we get from the federal and state, 55% is the millage. And looking at those numbers and then just listening, obviously, all the efforts that you put in with the numbers in the graph, the respite went down for 2019. So I'm thinking that did not involve the millage money in there. And secondly, I look at a question again to you, the Meals on Wheels considerably, the 2019, the green, the graph that I'm looking, looks considerably less than the 2017 and the 2018. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
The, the units?
You're right. We're about-
The Meals on Wheels.
Right. No, but the meals are higher for 2018, less than-
No, just in that, just in September.
And 2019, it seems like it's kind of gone low as comparison to- And 2019, it seems like it's kind of gone low as comparison to November with 2017 and perhaps 2018. Overall, 2019, I'm looking at, it's gone down, meals and wheels. Is it because of the less of the federal money that you're getting, or the millage wasn't enough to contribute to the meals and wheels, or did you not need that?
Neither, neither. I think it's just a trend that people, like, we were talking, you know, the one population is passing away, and the population that should be taking its place is healthier or active, they don't need the services.
Cook for themselves. Okay, got it, got it. So another one, just in regards, I don't want to take a lot of your time. You did mention about the budget that you left with roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, is $257,000 roughly, and then out of that, you owe in monies, was it over that, which is $280,000 roughly?
The net income, maybe she's...
Oh, the net income, right.
So are you in the low?
No, 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 we're in the red, because you have to understand the net income includes depreciation and amortization.
So you are in the red?
No, we're in the black.
Okay, you're in the black, okay.
Kat, if you want to do, if you want to convert back to a cash basis, we are in the black, yes.
Got it. Thanks.
On your first page, if I'm, if we look at the congregate lunch in the middle, you had planned the expenses were going to be $125,000, and they came out to actually be $90,000, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then the same thing right next door with adult daycare, it's considerably less.
Yes.
Okay. As you go through those things, in-home respite care is about half of what you planned on. Now, if you go down to the bottom, towards the bottom, where it says actual use of millage funds and original planned use of millage funds, you've got your millage, the original planned use all the way through there, and your original planned use of millage funds was $214,000.
In...
In what, are you...
Clear to the left, down towards the bottom.
Yes, to operations, right here. Yes, 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 okay.
Am I correct there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, my question, the question I have for you is, if this was your original budget, you knew in your original budget, you were going to have to pay the $280,000 for the bond debt. That $214 doesn't even cover that.
$214 doesn't cover that, but again, you have, remember that these financial statements and my budget is prepared on an accrual basis, so when I look at depreciation and amortization, which is a non-cash expense, I will add that back into my bottom line, so I've got about $200,000 in expenses that aren't going to require cash. So that cash then is used to cover bond payments.
Okay, but my question is, in your original budget, you did not have $280,000 allocated to pay the bond debt?
I had about, we ran with a, we budgeted a $60,000 shortage because we had extra cash. As it turned out, we didn't, a $60,000 cash shortage. As it turned out, we didn't need it.
Well, it just...
That's true. The bond pay, okay, so...
From, from, from the standpoint of putting together the original budget, and I understand when you put together a budget, that there could be things that are going to be up and down, and they're not the same, but you know that you have a $280,000 payment you have to make for that.
Right.
That has to be in the original budget.
The budget is prepared on an accrual basis, so when I want to bring in the bond payment, I take and I add back my, my depreciation and amortization, and that's where I bring it. It's, it's down and dirty, it's not exactly accurate, but it'll bring us up, approximate our cash available, which is different than our income. Yeah, the bond payments are on the bottom.
On the balance sheet. The bond payments are on the balance sheet. It's a little bit different with the accrual, Bruce, that the bond payments, the depreciation, and so you'll see the bond pay, the long-term debt on our balance sheet. I don't know if that's explaining the difference between the accrual and the cash.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Well, we made our bond payments, and we have lots of cash to spare, so I'm happy.
Yeah, and, and, right. It's the way it's read, that we still, we still have that in our budget, even though it's not reflected on this actual sheet you're seeing, just so you know.
This is only, this is only millage usage. This is not, you know, millage is also, I mean, we use, any profit we get from other things go to cover all of the expenses, so.
Right, right. This is the millage versus the budget. And when we come back in February, you can see that on our budget, Bruce, how we allocate that. Couple other, there's no more questions, just...
Just one last. With the bedbug issue, you mentioned you had a bedbug chamber.
Yes.
What is the cost that you incurred with that, and how many times in a month, or is it alternate months? Does all the stuff go into this particular chamber?
It depends on the equipment we receive. So if we get, you know, if we get five donations of equipment, a lift chair, a wheelchair, a shower chair, even though you wouldn't think it would stick to a shower chair, it's, they have incorporated that into the process when we receive stuff. So it depends on how much equipment that we have. If we have, if we have noticed one of our clients, then that would change in our adult daycare. If we have a client that, oh, we found bedbugs in their house, we probably need that lift chair that he's always sitting in, maybe we need to run that through. So the cost for the bedbug chamber was $1,500.
Right. And I have been monitoring our electric bill, because basically what it is, is this chamber, you plug it in, it heats everything up, and up to like 140 degrees or something like that, and has to hold it, but that electric. And I've been monitoring our electric bill, and I haven't seen a substantial increase. So we looked at what it would cost if we had an infestation, or we had to get someone in to do that, and this chamber has paid for itself, you know, one, one time would pay for itself, many times over, so.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Because we did have an individual with emergency assistance where she had her house done, and I think it was...
It was about $2,000, and he gave her a deal.
Yeah.
That was a house.
Yeah, a small house for that. The other piece is that you are all welcome to attend our Thanksgiving meal on November 27th, and we usually have volunteers that help. We serve you, so if you're looking to interact with some of your constituents, you are invited to attend again on Wednesday, the 27th. It's the day before Thanksgiving, so you can get your stomach all stretched out for the big meal the next day. The other piece is, we, as you know, do the men's and women's breakfast, and the, the men meet the second Thursday of the month at 7:30, which is this Thursday. Women meet the third Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock with the speaker at 9:30. It takes women longer to get ready. And this month's topic is physical therapy and how to avoid falls, so we will have physical therapists there, just recommending and suggesting some things people can do to avoid falling, especially this time of year. We have additionally, we are trying to be part of the whole Census 2020. It's very important for our county to make sure the numbers are counted, especially for those snowbirds who maybe only spend three months down in the warmer climates, to make sure that they're counted up here, because it does go into, I don't need to tell you, I'm preaching to the choir. But we are working with how to really get all of the seniors, particularly this time around. A lot of it's going to be online, and computers are somewhat intimidating to some of the older population still. So we hope to have one, if not two, in our lobby that people can fill out their Census 2020 as well for that.
I have a question. How's the board? Do you still need board members?
Yes, we do need board members. We like to have 11, and we, our board is made up of, we have a county commissioner designee. We have, we like to look at an equal split between male and female. We look at demographically, do we have somebody from the ransom area, from the Somerset area? Geographically, and do they have a specialty? Do they have healthcare? Do they have legal expertise? Do they have HR expertise? Do they have accounting expertise? We don't always get what we need in those categories, but we are now, I would really like to see two more, definitely one, because we are at 10. We had a couple resignations that were unplanned last year, so would really like to see more participation. Somerset is an area that, we had Molly Wolf for, for a number of years, but somebody from the Somerset area. We do have ransom, I'm trying to go around the table, unfit reading, Pittsburgh.
Do you need more men?
Probably, yeah. We, we had a lot of men for a while, and then it was like, wow, we're getting more women now, but we had two men retire. Well, we had one that came on board and immediately went off, and then we had another gentleman.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Four men.
Four men?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So there's an opportunity.
Absolutely.
How do people, what do people do if they want, if they want to get on the senior board, what do they...
They could contact me. There is a volunteer application, and once the volunteer application, we present it to, we have a nominating personnel recruitment committee, we call it the NPR Committee, and they review the, the board applications in addition to reviewing policies and procedures for the center. So suggestions, I've had people call me and say, this individual would be great. In the last three months, I've sent out two, talked to those two individuals, and they never sent their volunteer application back. So to me, that, they said yes from a face-to-face, but then just took it back and set it on a shelf, and obviously must not have been interested. One, and, and I followed up twice on them, and I thought, I'm not going to hound. So we need once, we need, the board needs once a month. We do ask for participation on one or two of our four committees that we have. Five committees, I had to think about that, so. But they can contact me, Ruth.
This is a good time to ask if Sandra has anything she wants to say, because Sandra's on, on the board. How long have you been on the board, Sandra?
I'm, I'm going on to my second round with, with the senior center, and I just think Hillsdale is so fortunate and so lucky to have the facility here that we have, and it's, it's a wonderful operation, and Terry and Wendy do an excellent job, so. I couldn't say enough for either one of them.
I appreciate you being here today and for your service on the board. It's, it's a lot to be on that board. It's, it's a fair amount of work. It's a time commitment, and it's a lot of preparation. It's, it's, it's a definite serious commitment. It's, it's a big job that you have to do on that board, but it's, it's for a good cause, definitely. And I think, and I am able to echo what Sandra said, Terry and Wendy do a very, very good job.
Thank you.
And they did change their structure. So Steve is marketing now, isn't he?
Director of Development and Marketing, yes.
Development and Marketing is Steve, and Wendy is not doing finance anymore. She's doing operations.
I wish, no, she, but she's, she does a lot of finance.
Who are, who are the new people that you hired? Saul?
Finance coordinator.
He's, he's getting up to speed, so.
April left.
April left.
April left. So it's Saul and you, and who else?
Lori.
Lori.
Lori Day, yeah. Lori Day, she's been there.
Restructuring, new staff, new personnel.
Yeah. And, and did want to say too, that Wendy has experienced no issues. Stephanie's doing a good job as far as our millage allocation and millage. The timeliness is most appreciated, and that we're not having issues with, with when we get our millage dollars, which is always, that's always nice. So, thank you, Stephanie.
Any more questions for Terry already?
Thank you.
Thank you, and promised you before, but if not, we'll see you in February.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee report, Ruth?
I want to announce that on next Thursday, which is the 21st, Bruce is coming to Jelly Beans at 9:00 in the morning, and we're going to do a community conversation, and Bruce is going to talk about the county budget and about county finances. So that is open to the public on November 21st at 9:00 a.m. at Jelly Beans. Please come and, we're going to talk about county finances and the budget. Tonight, there is, there is a Michigan State, MSU Advisory Council meeting on the computer, which is where you log in and do it on Zoom. I am not going to be able to do that tonight, but when the meeting is over with, they will send notes of what was talked about during the meeting, and I will forward those to everybody on the, on the board, so you'll have those. Now, for people that want to get involved, that's a, that's a good place to get started. There, I've talked before about the fact that there's openings on that advisory board. They need people. There's a lot of people that have been on that for a really, really long time and would like to have a break from it. So if you're interested in that, contact Matt Shane at Michigan State Extension, and he'll get you on board with that. We need good representation from Hillsdale. We need people from Hillsdale. J.J. Peck has been on it for years. She's been on the state level also. We need some new people on that advisory. They meet four times a year, twice face-to-face, where you have to drive someplace like to Ann Arbor or Jackson or somewhere in the district, and then the other two times, they meet on Zoom, which is the computer, where you log in on the computer. So if there's anybody that is interested in that, I would encourage you. I hear people saying that they want to get involved. That's a good way to get involved. Michigan State Advisory Council, contact Matt Shane at Michigan State Extension. There is a survivors of suicide luncheon coming up in Jackson Saturday, November 23rd, 11:00 a.m., Baker College in Jackson. This is for family members that have had a suicide in the family, survivors of suicide. This luncheon is totally free. Lifeways in Jackson got several sponsors, like the hospital up in Jackson, Allegiance is one, and there are several others that are paying for this, so that the people that have to go to the luncheon are not paying for anything. It's a free event. There's going to be a documentary shown from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and there will be support, fellowship with others who have had suicides in their families. Please go online to Lifeways and under Events and RSVP for that. This is something that I really, really want to get started in Hillsdale. I'm, I'm going to go to this luncheon and get a feel for it, and I really, really would like to get something started in Hillsdale for survivors, because we know that when there is a completed suicide, that the percentage of survivors in a family goes up significantly. And so it was something I really want to get started in Hillsdale. But this event in Jackson on Saturday, November 23rd, is open to anybody, so even if you're from Hillsdale or anywhere around here, you can go to this on Saturday, November 23rd, and there is a very, very good to support other people who are in the same situation. So unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
November 23rd, Saturday, what's the venue? Where is this?
Baker College in Jackson, right here.
What time is it?
You're welcome. Baker College in Jackson.
Any other questions for Ruth? Go easy on us on Saturday.
Well, just remember, it's, it's, it's the biggest game of the year, and so it's, and Michigan State could easily beat Michigan on Saturday, very easily.
You believe that? I guess I'm swan bait, I'll say. Meanwhile, back at the ranch. That brings us up to public safety and judiciary. Commissioner?
Harvey, thank you for this. So just going to, however best I can in updating the windmill turbines, because I know that this wonderful group, the entire... because I know that this wonderful group, the entire residents of Wheatland Township has been working on this. We have Chris Pollard here today with the group of people. They have filed a petition for administrative appeal and request for hearing on behalf of this team that's called Inform Citizens of Wheatland Township. And they have been fighting for various reasons in regards to people versus the township board and in regard with the windmill turbines. A couple of issues that were covered, which they did notify to the Board of Trustees, but it wasn't presented to them formally due to many reasons that were in there, which was the conflict of interest, which some of the board members did display of having to have the initiative within the contract of the windmill turbines. So, which is why the petition that was filed, was filed on behalf of the residents, the people. They have the attorney involved, so they are in litigation, probably pursuing lawsuit against the township. But that was denied to them, apparently, to this particular group of people of Wheatland Township. Because again, what I mentioned earlier was the conflict of interest because all the three members of the board were involved in it, and that's all they have in that board. I did provide some copies of the petition, the motion that was placed by this particular group, the entire residents to the township. They have an attorney called Clauslaw, P-L-L-C. And a couple of points that go back as far as to the zoning administrator, the couple of issues that were stressed out and stretched upon them. Number one was the May 17th, 2018 Wheatland Planning Commission Resolution and Recommendation that the Township Board adopt, then propose Wheatland Township Ordinance, Section 16.25 Wind Energy Facilities was improper. The other point was the June 12th, 2018 Wheatland Township Board Amendment and Adoption of Wheatland Township Ordinance, which was Section 16.25 Wind Energy Facilities was improper. And the reason that was maintained here is due to the board members' conflict of interest that was already mentioned to you earlier in my conversation. Number three, the July 18th, 2019, the Wheatland Township Planning Commission Recommended for Approval of the Conditional Use Permit Pertaining to Crescent Wind LLC was improper again. And one of the reasons they deliberated was of the date, July 18th of 2019, Planning Commission meeting, the Commission did not have the necessary coram to make, deliberate, and/or adopt such a resolution recommending the approval of conditions use permit for Crescent Wind LLC, which is a Chicago-based company. The other point that was mentioned here was the Planning Commission did not provide adequate notice to the meeting to all residents within 300 feet of affected properties. The next one or more of the Planning Commission members that voted on the resolution had a conflict of interest. Going on to the important point, number four. August 13th of this year, Wheatland Township Board adopted approval of conditional use permits pertaining to Crescent Wind LLC. The Wheatland Township Board members did not abstain from deliberation of the conditional use permits and did not properly resolve their conflicts of interest. And the last on that was the Wheatland Township Board did make any determinations pursuant to Wheatland Township Ordinance, which was Section 16.06. Overall, the entire conclusion, what I have gathered in constant deliberation and conversation with Wheatland Township and Mr. Pollard and the residents of Wheatland Township, the affordment of properties and illegalities committed on behalf of the Wheatland Township Planning Commission and Wheatland Township Board, it was requested time and again to determine some of the things. One of them was amendment to the Wheatland Township Ordinance, Section 16.25, as approved by the Board and Planning Commission, was improperly adopted and therefore voided. The second is the conditional use permits approved by the Planning Commission on July 18th, 2019, and the Wheatland Township Board on August 13th, 2019, are illegal, improper, and therefore void, my apologies. And the matter was asked with request upon request by the residents that they have a formal hearing. And so far, they're awaiting next steps. And when they would have the hearing, I believe the Attorney Claus and their group would be present there. That's all I have from updates in regard to the windmill turbines from the Wheatland Township.
So is there a timeline for when this formal hearing is going to be? Or when is a formal hearing going to be?
I believe they wanted to do it this evening, tonight. And I just got to get the information this morning from Mr. Pollard that they were denied because of the reasons that there were three board members who presented conflict of interest in the matter. And so therefore, it was denied.
So now what are they going to do?
I believe they want to formally still pursue a lawsuit. People do have a voice in this. And I'm hoping that somehow the people would be heard because I believe people can make mistakes, board can make mistakes. But in my understanding, if the people have given all that they have, this money is coming out of their pockets. This is not coming out from the general fund of the Board of Trustees or the township. So it's expensive for them. So they're pursuing it because they feel that there's a need that they need to be heard, and they're not being heard.
Did everyone get the information that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to pass out, or, okay. Okay. Well, appreciated the update.
Thank you.
That's a lot of information in that that was sent out last night.
Mm-hmm.
More than I know. I mean, it's, it is a township matter, but it's still nice to stay informal. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
Want the sheriff?
Yes. Sheriff, you have anything for us today?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Chris, anything from the cards?
No.
Thank you.
Not much, just, we're looking at doing the shredding project in early December.
Thank you. All right. Facilities and Technologies, Julie, you still there?
Yes, sir, still here.
You have the floor.
Okay. The first thing I want to do is address 19-114, the ambulance contract resolution. I have two issues. One is, that was just pointed out to me last night. There seems to be some of the board, or ambulance facilitation board members feel there's a typo in the contract, which does make a difference. And also, in reading the resolution this morning, just before the meeting, I realized that the date in the resolution for the contract N is incorrect. It reads December 31st of 2020, and it should be December 31st of 2022. So I don't know if I should proceed or just hold it and bring it back at the next meeting?
We can amend it.
Okay. So.
I'll move to change 2020 to 2022.
Okay.
We can, we can probably.
I could actually just do that.
Yeah, we can just do that by consensus.
Okay.
We don't need a motion to change that.
Okay. Because it was supposed to be a three-year, you know, it's a three-year contract, if you read through it. With an opener each year to do any business that needs to be attended to in the contract. But it is a three-year contract. Bruce, you concur correctly that it's through 2022?
Yeah.
Okay. The typo that was just, it was pointed out to me last night, and I wasn't able to speak with one of the association members till this morning before the meeting, is in, if you go through your packet to the contract, it's in paragraph 1A under Services Provided. And what the sentence currently says is, all, in the middle of paragraph A, it says, "All ambulance vehicles shall be equipped with mobile computer terminals, MCT, and automatic vehicle locators, ABL, units that interface with the Hillsdale County Central Dispatch by no later than December 31st, 2020." I've been told that the MCT is not the only automatic vehicle locator system, and that that word should say, instead of and, it should be or. And that would need to be corrected.
If that's supposed to be, we can just make that correction too.
That's fine.
Well, what about, does it need to be or, or can it be and/or? So and slash or?
It, well, either way works.
It could be and slash or, that's if you're more comfortable with that.
And/or, make it just be or. You don't have to have an MCT to have an automatic vehicle locator system in your ambulance, which is the goal. The goal is so that Central Dispatch knows where the ambulances are located at all times so we can get emergency service, obviously, to a constituent as quickly as possible. And there are other locator systems besides this specific type. And so that's why they wanted to say or, or and/or, either one, I mean, either one would be sufficient. I just, it needs to be amended.
Yeah, Julie, Bruce is indicating or will be fine. I think there, again, we can do that by consensus if everybody.
If you want to and/or, that's fine too. If you're more comfortable with that.
If it's easier for me to just do or.
Okay, make it or then, that's fine.
They both accomplish the same thing, I feel, so.
Okay.
But Commissioner Gaines, I mean, and/or, the reason we asked was, is because do you need one of the two? Because you have the MCT and then the ABL. Do they have just the one of that? Or do you have to have the two or, and just one?
No, you just have to.
So or would be the right word rather than putting and/or, in my opinion?
Right.
The whole goal is to have a system in your vehicle that is an ABL.
Okay.
Okay, an automatic vehicle locator. That's the goal of this paragraph. And an MCT is one type of ABL, okay? But there are other types. So we don't want to require necessarily that it's an MCT type.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying or.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Right.
By consensus?
That's right.
Okay. That is done. Anything else?
Nope. So then, I think I need to go, you have to give me a second because I'm paging back through this up to the actual resolution. And read it, correct?
You don't have to read the whole contract, no, just read the resolution.
There's so many pages in this thing here. Okay, sorry, I'm trying to get back to the resolution page. Okay, so I will read the 19-114. And we're going to accept this as the contract as amended with or and with the date amended. And I'm just going to read the amended date. So to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners authorize the Chair to sign the Hillsdale County Ambulance Services Contract effective January 1st, 2020, and terminates December 31st, 2022. Furthermore, the ambulance services contract will be between the following: Addison Ambulance Service, Hudson Area Ambulance, Reading Emergency Unit Incorporated, Somerset Township Fire and EMS, and Wright-Waldron Fire and Ambulance Association. Respectfully submitted, Julie Gaines, Chair of Facilities Technology and Economic Development, Vice Chair of Public Safety. So that's my motion.
I support that.
Okay, yeah, movement, the motion's been moved and supported. Julie, I've got a couple of questions. I guess you and Bruce can tag team on this since you two have worked on this. Going through these, I see response time varies from contract to contract.
Come to that. I'm going to give you a full explanation of this contract.
Okay, Bruce is going to address that, so I'll let him address that right now. Please.
Okay. If you start on page two, page one, excuse me. What was one of the things, and Julie, anytime I mess something up, you just jump in. One of the things that was debated back and forth early on in the negotiations with the ambulance services is what kind of language were we going to have in for them to prepare services or to provide services? And what we ended up settling on was what was on the ballot. We're going to provide ambulance services. And we have a definition of that from our lawyer, which I shared with the ambulance association. So what you see in there in the first page, whereas contractor has expressed a desire to provide ambulance services, that came directly from the village language that the voters voted on. Page two, you will see in three of the contracts and not in the other two, location of vehicle and personnel. Now, this used to be in all the contracts. The contractor shall locate within the service area on regular, full-time basis and authorize and license to emergency ambulance. I brought up the issue that it was ludicrous to have Addison be required to have a full-time ambulance in Wheatland Township, which is their service area. So that was taken out of Addison's contract. It's in for Waldron, it's in for Reading, it's in for Somerset. They have no problem. And then Hudson, the guy from down there was concerned. He didn't want that in his contract. Well, if you look at Hudson, they're not a whole lot different than Addison in that regard because they cover just two townships, Pittsford and Jefferson, and they can get there really quick. So we took it out of that one. Now, I found out afterwards that he does have an ambulance right now in the Pittsford area in a building. But if he didn't want it there, treating him the same as Addison, I don't think is unreasonable. So we took it out of theirs. The contractor, number four, the contractor shall maintain mutual aid agreements. This just allows them to cover for each other when they can't take care of all the calls that may be coming in. The term of the agreement, as Julie said, is through 2022. But the point, the point I want to make to you is, is that notwithstanding the foregoing, authorized representatives of the parties will conduct a joint annual review of the agreement. So while this is a three-year agreement, there will be a joint annual review of the agreement. So anything that comes up through the course of the whole, during the course of the year with the ambulance associations or them with us, we will sit down every year and go through this, and there can be, there could be amendments to it. Page three, early termination. This contract may be terminated by either party at any time with or without cause upon not less than 90 days' written notice. And then it goes on to explain what written notice means and where you're going to send it. Okay? So you could, this board could in the future, if they wanted to, just say to an ambulance, one of the ambulance providers, we don't want you anymore. We're not going to keep you. They could say to us, we don't want you anymore, and we're not going to participate anymore. That provides it. So it doesn't have to be with cause, it doesn't have to be anything they've done wrong or anything of that sort. It can be with or without cause. And it clearly defines where this written notice is to be sent, and you cannot do it verbally. Number eight, the contractor should use its best efforts toward enhancing its ability to provide more timely ambulance services. As part of the joint annual review, the authorized representatives of the parties shall discuss the contractor's progress in this regard. And that was one of the issues that Julie brought up that was on the flyer that was sent out to, when the village was held. That was going to be part of the effort, to use this village to improve timeliness issues. Boundance, section nine, points I want to bring to your attention of financial audits and reviews. Within two weeks of their receipt by the contractor, the contractor shall provide the county with a copy of all audits and reviews of contractors' finances as they are completed in the regular course of business, but not less than annually. Okay? So they're all going to be doing that. Now, you have some situations like Reading, if I understand it correctly, they have an audit, like every three years, they have a review in between. And that's the reason you see audits or reviews in there. You'll see Wright, or Wright Ambulance Service, they're part of the village, apparently. And I said, that's fine, just send this. And I said, "That's fine, just send us that part of, that part of the village's audit." Another issue that we talked about before the village vote was retention. So no later than December 1st of each year during the term of the agreement, the contractor shall provide the county with a report of the contractor's employee retention rates for the preceding years. So we're going to start building some data on that, so we know how well they're hanging on to people. It's the same kind of situation we had out at 911. And we want to know that what we're doing is being successful in retaining people, paying them enough that they'll stay here. Then we get on to page four, the contractor shall comply with the following response time. Now, early on in the negotiations, Dennis, down to Waldron, said to me, he said, "I think at the time, there was like 10 minutes in there that they had to respond in 10 minutes." And Dennis said, "Well, you can put anything in there or you want." He said, "I'm telling you right now, we're never going to get where we're at out down there in the rural area, spread out." He said, "We're never going to get there in 10 minutes, it's not going to happen." So that led to the discussion of differentiating times, okay? And what could they be comfortable with? And you will see that it says it's a goal, okay? Which means we're working towards that. And you will see in all the different contracts, you'll see different times in there. And that's because of that whole issue of trying to make it reasonable, okay? But recognizing the difference in the ambulance services. Now, the contractor shall submit quarterly activity response times and capital village expenditure reports no later than one week prior to each allocation installment payment date indicated in paragraph 22. So they get paid quarterly. They got to have this stuff in by them, okay? If they don't have it in by them, then they won't get paid until one week after the reports are filed. Now, we've had issues in the past trying to get reports, and it hasn't been enforced. It's been our fault, as commissioners, we haven't enforced it and gotten the reports. And this contract provides for all the reports that we're asking for, that they're going to be submitted, okay? And they have to be submitted, or no payments will be going out. So my suggestion is, going forward, is that either Julie or I sit down and write a letter and send it to Stephanie, so she knows the treasurer's office, the reports have to be in, and she's not to pay until informed by the chairman of this committee that those reports are in. And when she's informed of that, then she can pay. In the past, it's just kind of been pay it. And we have done our due diligence as commissioners, making sure these, these things were done. Number 11 is a right to inspection. We maintain that, a duly authorized agent of the county appointed by the Board of Commissioners shall have the authority at all reasonable times to inspect. That provides our ability to oversee them. You and I don't know dilly-squaddly about the ambulance services and what they have to do and so on and so forth, but we can appoint someone. So we're getting an audit, so we know their financial status, okay? And we're able to send somebody in if we want to, to look over their operations and see what's going on. Insurance, they have to provide insurance, and again, if they don't provide the insurance, you're not going to get their money. And on the insurance, the county has to be named as an additional insured on said policy. Now, in negotiations, when we talked with these fellows, their lawyer himself said, "It doesn't cost them anymore to have Hillsdale County on as an additional insured. It's just a matter of doing it, and it's common practice throughout the state." So that, that is in there. Then in number 13, in the previous contract, there was a provision that if there were disagreements, that there would be binding arbitration, that would be it, and it's talked about who was going to sit on the board. One of the people that was supposedly sitting on the binding arbitration board was never even told that they were sitting on the binding arbitration board. And when they found out about it, they weren't real thrilled about being in the middle between the county and the ambulance services, which I understood completely. So we've rewritten a lot of this, and it said, "The failure of the contract, contractor to abide by any of the terms in this agreement shall constitute a default if not properly corrected by the contractor upon the contractor's receipt of written notice of deficiency and a demand for compliance. The contractor's material failure to comply with the terms of this agreement in whole or in part may result in the loss of village allocation funding to a contractor in whole or part. In the event of a failure by contractor to abide by any of the terms, conditions, or requirements expressed in this agreement, the county shall provide contractor with a written notice of deficiency and demand for compliance." Again, it has to be written, none of this verbal stuff, okay? And that's going to be on us. If we're not happy with something, we're going to have to let them know. "Within seven business days after receiving written notice of deficiency and demand for compliance, the contractor shall either provide the county with a written plan of correction, they have to provide it writing, or a written notice of objection to the claimed deficiency." Okay? "In the event the contractor provides the county with a written notice of objection, then within 30 days, okay, the contractors of that notice, the party shall in good faith engage in non-binding facilitated mediation with a mediator to be mutually selected by the parties. All fees and expenses shall be divided equally between the parties." Okay? And once that mediator gets done, if either party has still got a burr in their bonnet and wants to, they can continue it on in court. But it allows a clear, defined process to carry forward to, and there's never been any issues in the past, but hopefully there never will be. But this provides a clear issue, and it's not binding any, either side to what the mediator says. It allows both to want, if they want to, to, to the, to the law. Subcontractors on page six, the contractor shall not enter into any subcontract for the provision of any of the services without the prior written permission of the county." So that issue has come up in the past sometimes. Now, on capital, equipment expenditures, they get some capital equipment money from one of the villagers. And most of what's in here has been in here from before. But towards the end of it, on page eight, it says, "The repayment provisions in here shall not apply in the event that this agreement is terminated by the county prior to the expiration of its stated term for a reason that constitutes a determination without cause." Bottom line, to put it in blunt terms, if the commissioner's going to burr up their hind end and decide, for whatever reason, they don't want Somerset anymore, and they just say, "You're fired," then Somerset's not going to have to pay back any of the capital expenditure funds to the county that they've done. If, if there is a cause and they're terminated for that reason, then the rest of the provision when set in place, they're going to have to pay back according to what's done here. On page, continuing on page eight, inmates shall be transported from Hillsdale County Jail by the contractor when requested for authorized and necessary emergency medical services at no cost to the county as the cost of such transportation is already included within the compensation to be paid to contractor under this agreement. That's part of the village funds, forget it. The taxpayers have already taken care of that. Contractor, and then Julie put this in, she caught it, and it was a really good catch. During the course of the village proposal, people were told that if this passed, they wouldn't have to pay anything more than what their medical insurance pays, okay? So the contract, the language in, clear to the bottom of page eight, says, "The contractor agrees not to submit a bill seeking payment directly from any Hillsdale County resident for any portion of the contractor's provision of emergency medical services to a Hillsdale County resident who lacks such insurance coverage." So any resident, whether they got insurance or they don't have insurance. If they're transported by the ambulance, okay, they are not going to get a bill from the contractors, okay? The contractors will get money out of the insurance companies if you have insurance. If you don't have any insurance, but again, I want to mention to you, or I want to emphasize to you, that it's for, uh, let me get the correct language here.
Emergencies only, and you'd have to be a resident.
Emergent services only. So in other words, you can't call an ambulance if you want to go to the Kroger store and expect it to be paid for, okay? It ain't going to happen. If it's an emergency service, you got to get to the hospital and so on, then it will be paid for. You won't have, you won't have to worry about paying for it. Now, that takes care of all of the major issues. Then if you're going to, the other issues, the other contracts, I think Reading is pretty much, yeah, Reading has a response time of eight minutes and 12 minutes, and that's because they deal more in the city areas, and it's much easier to get to city areas than it is out county areas. Addison, as I said earlier, does not have a requirement to keep an ambulance stationed in Wheaton Township. So that's taken care of. An ambulance, and the response time is 12 minutes for 90% of all emergency ambulance service calls for Addison. For Hudson, again, I, as I mentioned, there's no location requirement. Their response time is 15 minutes, okay? And Somerset, um, maintain mutual aid agreements, yes. Their response time is 12 minutes, and they've got Somerset and Moscow Townships, so theirs is 12 minutes. So that, I think, gives you everything. There was no surprises in that way at this time, and it was a long runout process, but I think it was a very good process. There was a lot of stuff put on the table, I don't know, and a lot of listening. And some major rewrites in here, but I think it's much fair having some differentiation between the ambulance services, because they're not all the same, quite frankly. And one of the issues with Hudson, you know, people say, "Well, they've only got two townships, why do they need 15 minutes?" Hudson covers, or helps to cover, what Wright-Waldron covers. So if they need advanced life support down there, they got to get down there. So they, on those kinds of calls, they've got quite a ways to go. And so that's the reason that it's 15 minutes for them on 90% of their calls, as opposed to a lower time.
And as you indicated, that's a goal.
That's a goal, yep, yep. And they'll, and they'll report, and they're going to report every time now. And, and we simply have to sit down, if this is approved, and when they, we approve it and they approve, then we, we need to sit down as commissioners and put up a nice spreadsheet that says, "These are the reports that are due." And whoever's chair of this committee, whether it's Julie, whether it's Herman Gearing, whether it's Bruce Kanzo, whoever it might be, they have to follow you on this, and they have to keep Stephanie informed in the future, so that she only issues payments after it's been approved by the chair of that committee.
Can you say something?
Stephanie, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Carol just cuts those checks quarterly. I really don't have anything to do with it, except signing it and making sure it's signed, she gets a check to send. I don't, I don't see anything to not pay them.
Which is the reason one of us, whoever's chair of that committee, has to do their job, and make sure these reports are in.
So it probably needs to be copied, not only to Stephanie, but to Carol as well.
Yep. So Julie, do you want to put that bullet point sheet together, or do you want me to do it?
The report sheet?
Yeah, the report sheet, of what's...
I can do that.
Okay.
Dave Sluska and I are already working on that, president of the ambulance association.
Okay.
So we're already working on that.
So you've answered my question on the times, which I understand. The one thing I don't see in here, and maybe I'm going to open Pandora's box, but there's nothing about transfers, or at least I didn't see anything.
Ambulance services as defined by our lawyer, which was given to them, includes transfers.
Okay.
Now, I also want to mention to you that this, approving this contract does not approve the distribution of the money. We haven't voted on that resolution. That's an entirely separate resolution from this.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
And I have in here, if you want me to read it, in my stack of stuff.
I wondered what's in there.
My definitely nicotine-stained fingers, I never smoked. I sent early on, and as I said, the ambulance people have this, so it's no big, no big deal, but I sent to, early on, to our lawyer, Cole Storker, and the question I had is, "Can this village money be used in part to pay for transfers from Hillsdale Hospital to other hospitals where their patients need to go for more advanced services?" And he responded back with, I'll read the final paragraph. "Based on the foregoing," he went through all the legal godly goo, okay? "It is our opinion that the ambulance service village funds could be appropriated for not just emergency responses, but also for patient transports, including to pay for transfers from Hillsdale Hospital to other hospitals where the patients need to go for more advanced services." Okay? "Thus, the county board of commissioners would have a legal right to allow some of this village money to be used for such transfers." And also, he mentioned, and it's earlier on, but, "can also be used to transfer Hillsdale County people, nobody else, from hospitals back to Hillsdale Hospital, from other hospitals." So it can be in both directions, as long as it was a Hillsdale County citizen. Okay?
Okay. I think, part of the reason I bring that up is that one of the issues that I've heard back to me on these transfers is, is that if someone doesn't have insurance, who's paying for it? And hence, that would, that would offset that cost if we were to allocate some of the village money, is correct?
Mm-hmm. Because this village money can be used to cover either insurance or non-insurance. And they, if you don't have insurance, you will not get a bill from the ambulance associations. That's in the contract.
As long as it's for emergency service.
That's correct.
Yeah. But does that include a transfer?
Yeah.
Or does that just include from...
If it's emergency service.
Ambulance services includes transfers.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
Ambulance services includes transfers.
Okay, I thought that's what you said, but new, new concept, that there's no bill, as long as you're a resident, or as long as it's emergency.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Bruce or Julie on the ambulance contracts? Ruth?
No, sir.
Melanie?
Uh, just one really quick question to Commissioner Gaines, is, one thing that gets to my attention was that the village would cover the ambulance services for the 20 days if it was a Hillsdale County resident to another hospital, and this is only based if it is for emergency or is non-emergency? And if it's emergency, is it detected right away therein?
No, it has nothing to do with emergency. Transports have nothing to do with emergency or non-emergency. Transports are part of the ambulance services.
Okay.
They have to transport them.
And in regards with insurance or non-insurance, people who don't have any insurance, so does the village cover all of this? Does the county cover?
No. No, it only covers the transport for residents outside their insurance if it's an emergency transport.
Got it, emergency only.
Yes.
The thing that they're trying, the thing that we're trying to do here is to avoid having people start calling the ambulance for non, things that are, you don't need an ambulance for.
Right, like to go to Kroger's, right?
Because they know it's free, okay?
Right.
So there has to be a reason. You have to be sick...
Yeah.
...in order to use the ambulance, okay? And if you're sick and you use the ambulance, then fine, okay? They will not send you a bill. But if you call an ambulance, I was facetious, but if you call an ambulance to go grocery shopping at Kroger's, they're not going to pay the bill, okay? They can take you, but you're going to get charged. You know, that's what, that's what we're talking about here.
Got it, thanks.
All those in favor of 19-114 signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution passes five to zero.
Now, probably, excuse me, Representative Gaines, probably the next thing we're going to have to do is come back the next meeting with a proposal or a resolution for how to distribute the funding. Now, they have presented something to us, okay, quite a while ago, so we'll need to take a look at that and decide what we want to do.
Yes, we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'll be fine, as long as we get it done before the end of the year.
Yes.
It could either be next meeting or the first meeting. Next meeting, we'll be taking the first look at the budget, so, I mean, if we can do it next... next meeting or the first meeting in December, so.
Okay.
What else you had for us, Julie?
Um, I would like to just announce that the student tour that I spoke of at the last meeting is going to happen on Thursday, November 21st. The students will come and tour the county office building in the different departments from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. that day. They'll spend, you know, about 10 minutes in each department. We'll probably split it up and have two groups. So I'm very excited about that. And I'll be sending out an email to all the department heads with the details and elected officials with the details of that this week so that they'll know all the details. And they'll just be here for a body power. But I'm glad this is finally coming together and hopefully we will develop some student interns from this program. Also, I attended the Community Action Agency meeting this month and the MDOT Traffic Summit. I have a really nice flyer from the Traffic Summit that I will include in the packet next time and we can further discuss that if anyone has questions. Mark and I have continued our contract negotiations with 911 and the Sheriff's Department. We did reach a tentative agreement with 911 that had to be adopted and we're still working on our contract negotiations with the Sheriff's Department. And then my final meeting was a planning mission. We're gearing up next year to revamp the entire county plan, master plan, and we're looking for, I think, three board members for that. So we'll be working on that from now to the end of the year to have a full plan starting in January. And those positions will be posted on the county website and they, you do have to have specific qualifications to meet those positions and they'll be posted on the county website. And I believe that wraps up my report for this meeting.
I have a question, Julie.
Sure.
When you send out that email about the student tours, will you copy the commissioners on that just so that we know for sure what's going on?
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Send out that one.
The information on the tour?
No.
November 24th.
21st.
23rd.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Julie? Okay, Bruce, you're up.
Good job, good job, Julie.
Thank you.
I don't think you have, because we haven't talked about it. Have you done anything in terms of figuring out how much of a hit our budget's going to take because of the gains that are being played up in Lansing?
Not specifically. I've been kind of waiting to see how everything was going to turn out.
Which is my point, okay? Well, you know, we had this little tussle up there and everybody's got their egos involved and there's been a lot of stuff that money's been cut. We're not going to get any pill payments from the state. Is that correct, Derek? I've been pilts on the cutting board.
Yeah.
Road controls on the cutting board. And we're talking about putting a budget together next week and we keep hearing from the power of the D, oh, it'll be all right, we'll get it worked out. Well, here we are two months later and it hasn't been worked out. And it could very well not get worked out, okay? Now, the House and the Governor have apparently come to some kind of agreement. The Senate's not on board with it. So I think, to be wise, we need to have Derek look into specifically what programs have been cut, how much money are we going to lose, and then we need to take that into account in our budget. Because we're going to have to get cut that much more. Not that we have any more room to cut, but we can't just whistle by the graveyard and hope that somehow a miracle occurs in Lansing.
They happen every day up there, don't they?
Yeah. So Derek, can you do that for us?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do you have anything else that you want to give us before I start rambling on here?
Yeah, two quick things. The question came up with the HSAs, because we know it'll get asked by the employees, so we want to be prepared to answer them. We opted to do funding of the HSAs on January 1 and July 1. The question will be if someone has a major occurrence in the first half of the year that would eat up their first half funding and then some, would the county be open to some kind of a hardship where they could accelerate that second payment sooner? It's totally up to the board if they want to do that. There are ways, the employee could, other ways employees could go about things, trying to get payment plans, getting assistance and things like that. The easiest way though is that we just accelerate what we give them. So it's completely up to you guys, but I would like to have an answer for tomorrow.
I'm okay with that as long as we have to vote on it. It has to be brought to us and we vote on it. Just don't make it blanket. Has to be brought before us and then we can ask questions as to what the situation's about. And it's, what it amounts to is we're giving them, not giving them their earning, but we're putting into their HSA account, how much?
For a family plan, it's 2,800. So they would get half on January 1 and half on July 1.
So they get the 1,400 upfront and then somebody gets sick on a dog in January and they burn through that whole 1,400, then really the only options they got is to borrow the other 1,400 and then they have to pay interest on it. And if we, under case by case basis, would be willing to consider moving the second payment in July, the 1,400, paying it right away if they get in real deathly circumstances like that, I think that's what you're asking, right?
Right.
And Derek and I have swapped a couple of emails on this and I think Bruce was included on them, but it, it makes sense. It makes sense to look at them on a case by case, but it has to be, I think it has to be voted on today to at least put on record that we're going to address it as a hardship situation on a case by case basis.
Well, then I will move that we approve a hardship exemption for HSA employees, for employees who are in the HSA, that the second payment can be moved up by a vote of the commissioners strictly on a hardship basis because of high medical bills.
Does that cover it?
Sounds good to me.
I'll support that. I can support it, I can't make it, but.
Okay.
Everybody understand?
Yes, but I have a comment.
Please do.
I don't really care to have my medical situation brought into the public in front of the board, so I'm not really sure how this is going to work.
Well, yes, because of HIPAA, the, the details would be redacted, so to speak. I mean, the details, it'd be more of a monetary issue that would be brought to the board, correct? You know, if, if the, the medical bills exceed that 14 is really what we're looking at, you know, if they, if they blow through that 1,400, then that is the call for the hardship, Julie. The, the details of what the medical reason is would, would not be fair game.
Couldn't ask it anyway.
So who's making the decision, though? I mean, who's deciding if my, you know, my appeal is valid and Bruce isn't? Or, you know, how, how are we debating it then? I don't, I'm not clear on how this will work exactly. Do I just make a hardship appeal to Derek and then Derek makes a recommendation to the board?
I think you should appoint a commissioner to hear the appeal. A commissioner that they can go to and sit down and talk with and so on and explain what's going on.
I think, I would say, Bruce, we should appoint two commissioners to that along with Derek, so there'd be a committee of three people that would decide.
It's too many.
Well, we could bring it back to the personnel committee. We could, if you want to insert that, that it'd be brought to the personnel committee to then be brought to the board.
Okay. That's fine.
Yes, I would think, I would think that two commissioners plus Derek just no way to, you know.
No, Derek, Derek cannot be involved.
No, I think just, just the personnel committee, Julie. I, I mean, we can-
Okay.
Derek wants to be popular.
He's got enough on his, we keep piling things on his plate.
You have the monetary detail of the thing, but, okay.
Right, but he can get those to us ahead of time.
Okay. Okay.
But good, but good point. I mean, it's, it's not that we're looking at the medical aspect, we're looking at the financial aspect, so. Good point. Any other comments? Anybody want the red, the motion read back or?
No.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. What else you got for us, Derek?
Uh, just a quick update on the RFP for the, the pensions services with-
The actuary.
Block and Ross doing the actuary report. They said they're super close. They're hoping to have something this week, but if not, you know, the next week or two.
Next week or two?
They said, I wanted, they said this week and he said, we're definitely talking weeks, no more than weeks. So if we're not talking months, he, that's, that's kind of how he-
But lots of weeks can be a month.
I know, exactly. So I'm hoping that this week is, is the week that he's talking, so. I think we could have been a little sooner with this, but it took quite a bit of time on a couple requests from MERS to get some information back. And I don't know how much that impacted them or held them up because there were, because they, you know, they're working on a bunch of different stuff at once, but there might be a question for them to see how much that hung them up. But other than that, you know, I've been communicating with them every couple of days and, and we're on the right path, so should be soon. Any questions?
Open enrollment. You were kicking around some dates, I believe.
Open enrollment starts tomorrow.
Okay.
We have a meeting, our first, you know, the first day is tomorrow. We have three meetings set up, 11, 11 a.m., 1 p.m., 3?
I think it's 3.
3 p.m. So employees can come to any one of those meetings. We've, we've sent out notices. In those meetings, well, you know, the, the difference between the HSA and our current HRA plan will be discussed. Also, I believe a representative from Chemical Bank will be here to discuss the options of opening each employee's HSA account. So, and I think they'll, if they want us, if they want us to open it with Chemical, they can even do that, you know, at that time, if they've made up their mind. Open enrollment period is two weeks. Hopefully, we have everybody signed up in two weeks. That's my whole goal. Probably a lofty goal, but we're going for it, so. Any more questions on that?
I had in touch on open enrollment.
Oh, okay. I don't have to worry about that. Obama won't let me have insurance.
Okay. I think he's done unless you've got something for him.
No, I don't have anything for him. And he's thankful for that. All right. The next point I want to bring up is, a year ago, we did evaluations on department heads and different entities. And in those evaluations, there were specific things that needed to be done. And I think it's time for us as commissioners to do evaluations on Derek, he works for us, and on the department heads, not the elected officials, the department heads. And I think we need to be evaluating them, seeing how they're doing compared to the work plans or whatever you want to call them, that you put together for them. I think we need to take a look at that. So I guess I'm asking, what do you want to do with that? You want to ignore me and not do evaluations? We've never done them in the past and it doesn't have to be difficult. You can just go down through their work description, their job description, and just check off the things that they've done and the things they haven't done in terms of what was required of them, and that's simple enough.
I agree with you. Maybe we should start though, starting of the year?
No, start, do it for this year. It's the end of the year, we can look at what's been accomplished and what hasn't. So what's your others?
I think, I, I agree. But I think, I think it's okay to do it. I think, I think I'm fine with doing it. But I think also that going forward, there should be, we should put them on a schedule of some sort and, and tell them that this is when you do your evaluation, every year, the end of the year or whatever, so that they know, everybody knows that this is coming and it doesn't just pop up. But I'm fine with doing it. I think, I think, I think an employee evaluation empowers the employee. When I used to work in offices, I liked having evaluations because it showed me what I needed to work on or what I needed to get up to speed on or what I was doing good with, and I think it empowers the employee. I think it's good for them.
Well, I got, I got the idea because every group that I sit on, they do an evaluation of their CEO at the end. And it dawned on me, we did all that work to get those job descriptions done up and modernized and brought up to date so that they actually know what they're doing. We ought to be evaluating them. I think they look for us.
So who's going to do it? Personnel committee? How, how, how are you going to do it?
Good question.
Well, now, you can do however you see fit, but if you take like Nick, he's got a job description and some of it is stuff that you can't really evaluate, but quite a few of those bullet points are things that, did he do them or didn't he? Yes or no? And then just come back with a recap, you know, of the 45 items that Nick has to do. 90% of them were accomplished, the other 10% weren't. Got the same thing with Randy. Got the same thing with Derek. Now, we really don't have a, yeah, we got a job description for Derek, so we can do the same thing with him. To me, that's the easiest way. You don't even get, need to get into all this esoteric stuff. And yeah, let the personnel committee do it. I don't have, I don't care to do it myself. It's not, that's not why I'm doing it, but I think it needs to be done. I think people need to be held accountable.
I think we need to have a format, you know, for job descriptions, like you just said, that for example Derek's department would be different and for example David, who does the computers, and so those job descriptions are different. So a different time of evaluations to, and have a series of questions.
Well, Commissioner, you can get into all that stuff. And every group I've ever sat on fights for eons about what's a proper evaluation. All I'm saying is they have their, they have their job description, just go right down the list, the bullet points. Did he do this? Did he do this? Did he do that? If he did them, fine. If he didn't, fine. Now, if you want to get on after yours truly has gone from the board and you want to get more esoteric on your job descriptions, God bless you, go for it, okay? But I don't want to make this real complicated. I just want to know that the things that we approved a year ago are being done and we have no way of knowing that right now.
I think that, I think, one thing I think about the employees is when, when we approach the employees about anything, I, I don't care what the topic is, when we approach the employees, it should be an interactive discussion, a two-way discussion. It, it shouldn't be us just going in and saying, you know, Jody, yes, 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 goodbye, goodbye, Jody. You know? There needs to be, there needs to be an interactive. They, they need to have a say in the process and what's going on too. It shouldn't just be all of us talking to them. It should be an interactive process that they get to, to, to have a say in the process as well.
Well, they can have a say in it.
Both ways.
They can have a say in it, but they were given a list.
I understand, I understand.
That says, these are the things we'd like you to do, then-
I understand.
Just check off, see what they do. Now, you can get into all that other stuff.
I understand.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
I understand, I understand. There's also, there's also reasons why sometimes if they didn't, if they didn't get anything accomplished on their job description, there's also reasons why sometimes, sometimes there's not.
Well, I don't-
But we, we need to know that too.
Sure.
Not just know they didn't get it done and now they're going to get marked down.
The personnel committee can bring that information back if there's an item that just absolutely didn't get done.
And what their-
And there was a reason.
What their plan is going forward.
Sure, sure.
Right, okay.
Absolutely. You still there, Julie?
Yes, I'm still here.
So something you and I will have to get together on and we'll have to, I don't know, maybe in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we'll get it- maybe in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we'll get it done and then have something for the rest of the board at our last meeting of the year.
I would, I would make a se, this is just a suggestion, okay? I under, I heard what Ruth said, but I, I would agree with Namrata that this time we start it in January at the first of the year, because we are still working on the budget right now, we're not done with the budget yet, um, we haven't gone back around to any of the department heads or anybody else, we're still, we're still in the budget process, and there isn't much, much time left in this year with the holidays and everything coming up. Um, I, I'd like to see us get our budget done and put to bed before we start another project, before we start approaching employees and talking to employees again about stuff. That's just, that's just my, my opinion.
Julie and I'll take.
You decide that.
Yeah, Julie and I'll take that under advisement, but,
Okay, okay.
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
So, something else for us to work on doing.
Okay.
Respectfully, the budget's got nothing to do with.
No, but it's going around and talking to them.
Evaluations, the two are completely separated.
Right.
And the evaluations don't have to take a long time, if you just use the job description, sit down with the person and just go through things.
Just run through the list.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm a public defender. Um, a report was issued to the state, and one of the things that caught my attention was, for District Court, the number of times, the total number of times attorneys were absent at arraignments, and it was zero. So, there were attorneys present at every arraignment, which is good. You may remember I got a little huffy earlier in the year about making sure they were there, and they have been there. The total number of PV slash SC hearings, what in the world is that? Oh, shush, what PV slash SC?
Probation violation, show cause.
Probation, probation violation?
Show cause.
Show cause, okay. The total number of hearings was a hundred and fifty-five, and all clients had an attorney at arraignments for those hearings, so they're doing their job, the intelligent defense thing is working. People, no matter whether they're rich or poor, have got attorneys in District Court. In Circuit Court, same thing was true, uh, the total number of times attorneys were absent, zero, so they were there every time. And, uh, all PV probation violation and PPO violation clients, personal protection order, were arraigned with an attorney present, which is good. So, there's a lot more to the report, but those are the things that, at least, that got that much taken care of, and I think, I think we're well ahead of other counties in terms of what we're getting done with our poorer citizens. Okay, we got the situation with Prevention Works. And I put together a resolution or a thing for Jody, and I don't see it on our.
I meant to call you last night, I pulled it out, the PA two one.
Yeah.
I wanted to talk to you some more on that, we'll take it up next meeting.
Well, I want you to know that the MVA, which is McCullough Vargas, uh, is now the group that's getting all the PA two money. And whether they're engaging in prevention activities or offering treatment services, they've gotta find a fiduciary, because rather than sending the money directly to MVA, the state has said, "Does there need to be a fiduciary so that there's more accountability for how the money's being spent?" Cause MVA is getting the money and providing the services, and people were nervous about that, so there's been suggestions that Lifeways could be a fiduciary, the ISD could be a fiduciary, the Sheriff's Department could be, I don't think they'd be interested, but they could be, so they've offered some suggestions, so that the money will go directly to the fiduciary, and then they will allocate it to MVA for any services they perform, okay?
That's the way we handle our suicide prevention, we have a fiduciary.
Also, they talked about a, a long history of conflation between coalition and provider roles in Hillsdale, they recommend separating those roles. So, Prevention Works, which is the group that sets, or can select a new prevention coordinator to perform the coordinator's administrative duties, work with everybody, take the agenda, do all that kind of stuff. And usually someone from the organization that is a fiduciary serves in the coordinator's role, so if Lifeways, for instance, were to be chosen, or the ISD, then that entity, ISD or Lifeways, would have one of their people sitting there as the coordinator or the administrator of the meetings and taking care of everything and so on. So, that's just some things that have come along the pike with that group. We are going to be getting a request, maybe we've already got it, from the Community Action Agency. They want a cut of the CDVG money, the money that we just allocated. Now, they want eight percent, and if, if we don't give them the eight percent, then they're not gonna do it anymore, and we're gonna have to do it ourselves. Now, their claim, which would fall on Derek, their claim is that it's a considerable amount of work and it's a pain in the hind end dealing with the state and so on and so forth, so if we don't wanna do this, that's okay, but then it's gonna fall on Derek to handle all the paperwork with all the CDVG money coming in from these loans that are made and so on and so forth.
How much does the eight percent come to?
Well,
It depends on how much money we've cut.
I, I remember.
We just transferred over fifteen thousand dollars
Right, right.
Into the courthouse fund of the CDVG money, so, eight percent of that would be about twelve hundred bucks.
Okay.
That they'd take off the top.
See, we, we can utilize up to about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, so really, that's the number you need to focus on as far as eight percent. And Barney and I have talked about it, we're, we're not willing to, I'm not willing to give up eight percent, because all they're doing is the paperwork, and we've already done, between Barney and Bambi and myself, we've already done some of the paperwork this year to get some of the money, and we didn't have to pay anything.
But.
You know, other than our tax.
Right, but then how many hours is, is Derek gonna have? How many more, how many hours is that gonna pile onto Derek?
Right now, I don't think, have you helped with any of it yet?
I helped him a little bit, but Barney also does quite a bit over there.
Okay, so I, I don't know how many hours, Ruth, I, I don't know how to quantify that at this point, but I know I've got one right now that I've gotta take to Mr. Thompson to draw up a contract, because the individual that wants to pay off the CDDG money wants to do it over a five-year period, and we just need to make a contract, you know, a legal contract, and he'll pay the county, and then in five years, we'll have that one done.
Okay.
You know, a lot of these, Bambi is finding, if they were transferred from a family member to family member, quite often, there was no title insurance done, there was no lien search done, and so there's some sitting on the books, um, and so Bambi went back through and identified the ones that we need to look at. So, I guess I, I would respectfully tell them to take their eight percent and go somewhere else.
Okay? I can respectfully tell them that. All right. The final thing I wanna mention, yours truly is often cascaded for some of the ideas I come up with, that, well, we could do this differently, or we could do that differently, and of course, tends to happen that, well, we can't do anything different, this is the way we've always done it. Well, we had a situation happen in the Health Department, and the situation was, is that we had a person ask questions, and why are we doing this, and why aren't we doing that? And through those questions, they found out that they could get just a smidgen bit of money back from the state of Michigan through Medicare or Medicaid. And what it amounted to was a scheme that Paul Reinhardt put together years ago to get money out of the federal government, who we know just has gods of money, even if they have to print it, the Chinese pay for it. But the bottom line was, is that because of all the Medicaid patients the Health Department deals with, and getting into this program, they received a check back from the state for five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. They're gonna be getting another check for this year of another two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and all of that money has been dedicated, through the Health Department Board, has been dedicated to pay off the pension, to put it all into the pension fund, because they're suffering from the same problems we're suffering from. Now, there's two points to this. First of all, if you have money, you can do wonderful things, but second of all, we need to look at everything we're doing and ask how we can do it better, what are some other programs we can get involved with that will get us money into the county, and not always throw up defenses as, "Well, we've always done it like this, we can't do it any different." Because the long-term trend for our county, and I'm talking four, five years out, is the revenues are not going to meet the expenses, it's that simple. And if you believe that's a lie, then I would urge you to run for County Commissioner and get yourself involved here, because that's the long-term trend. The revenues are not going up fast enough to cover expenses over the long term. Now, the budget we're gonna present to you in two weeks has got a lot of tough things in it, a lot of difficult things in it, but in order to do the things that need to be done, those decisions were made. We don't have enough money in the bank to cover issues. Now, we had an issue happen this year, five hundred thousand dollars for Deputy Ludiger, it's gonna get paid for, and we're gonna have to take it out of the general fund. Well, we don't have five hundred thousand to have something like that happen. We need to build up our fund balance, but we also need to look at a fundamental restructuring of county government and how we can do things more efficiently and more effectively. And this is not a knock on any of our employees, they're all busting their tails, they're doing the best they can possibly do, but the point is, can we do things differently than we're doing them now and become more efficient? That's the question. And I, I go back to my days at the Big Boobah Castle up in Lansing, and, and we came in with a private company to look at how we were handling Medicaid sign-ups for the disabled, and how they were working through the system, and whether or not we were getting the money out the door to the hospitals efficiently, and it was taken forever, a hundred and sixty days, and with suggestions this company made, okay, we got it down to forty-five days, and the hospitals were getting their money a heck of a lot quicker, and the people weren't getting hassled with all kinds of bills. We saw the same exact thing happen out at the medical care facility. They brought in a private company that looked at all the operations and said, "These are the things you can do differently that can save you money," and they did it, and look at how they've turned that around. We need to consider, in county government, in my opinion, Matt, two bucks against a cup of coffee, we need to consider the same kind of thing, and if we can't do it with the elected officials, which they, they are their own bosses, I get that, then we certainly should be doing it with the department heads and the departments that we control, that we have authorization over. So, I just throw that out there for you to think about, because it's, I, I think there's a lot of possibilities if we're willing to look at doing things differently, but, that's all I have, thank you very much.
It's kind of ironic that you bring that up after, after the eight percent, that I don't wanna partake in. But it's, it's things like that, that if we can do the work ourselves, just save that eight percent.
Exactly.
So.
And, you know, a thousand here and a thousand there, before you know it, you're talking real money.
This is true. And not just coffee money.
We, we now have most of the departments, the elected officials, and I, and I gotta compliment them, we have most of them on board, that they're getting their Hillsdale Daily News, they're renewing them at the end of the year.
Fifty dollars off.
They get fifty bucks off, yep.
I'm getting ready to do mine.
And again, you can say, "Well, what's fifty bucks?" Well, if you have four or five subscriptions, there's two hundred and fifty dollars, you want the two hundred and fifty dollars in our account or somebody else's? It's just a lot of little things like that. And, and our elected officials, our departments, I can't complain about anybody being, you know, fool, spending money foolishly, I can't, but what I can say is, I think we can do even better if we're willing to look at things. I think we have the potential, so.
Okay, any questions for Ruth? All right, I'll jump right into nineteen one one five. The Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend the approval of the resolution pledging the limited tax fund. Limited, thank you. That's easier to read than that's, I'll start again. We recommend the approval of the resolution pledging the limited tax full faith and credit of the, of the county to the Lindsay Inter-County Drain Notes, Series two thousand nineteen, which will be for improvements to the Lindsay Inter-County Drain pursuant to a petition filed with the Hillsdale County Drain Commissioner under the provisions of Chapter Eight of the Drain Code of nineteen fifty-six, respectfully submitted.
Sport.
Thank you. The whole explanation as far as the notes was in your packet, this is a drain that is on the west side of the county, and, uh, so I believe this is, yeah, it's shared with the Ranch County, I believe when Matt was in here a few weeks ago, he did make mention of this, so, if there's any questions?
Is it down south or up north? Or in the middle, between the two counties?
I can't remember what Matt said on that, I, I honestly don't, I talked to him about it some more.
No problem, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Okay.
Cause I was trying to think of that last night when I was reading through this, but it was too late to comment. Anyways, if there are no questions, all those in favor, signal a five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I don't believe, did we need to do that, but no, no, I didn't think so. Okay. As Julie indicated, we've been working on the negotiations, and I believe, Julie, I believe that's going, those TAs for nine one one are on the nine one one agenda forthcoming, aren't they?
Yes.
So, we should have those, um, for approval at our next meeting, assuming the nine one one board approves that language.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I have is the opioid lawsuit. Mark Bernstein called me last week and spoke to me for about twenty minutes on this, um, he sent me an email that I'll be happy to forward to anyone. It's a lot of jargon that, unless you're a lawyer, it's hard to, when he talked to me on the phone, he kinda pointed out the high points, uh, some of which I think everybody's pretty much heard on the news from, you know, Purdue filing for bankruptcy, and they've, there's literally millions of dollars that are gonna come out of that, um, out of that lawsuit that was ruled on in Oklahoma, um, but, as far as any monies that we may see, it could be years, but as we've talked about before, we need to, if we get anything, we plug it into the areas that have been most affected by this crisis, if you will, so, but I, I'll forward, I just got his email, I think, last night, cause I told him after our phone call, I says, "Try and send me something via email," so I'll try and send that out to everybody, I know I shared it with Megan, um, because Megan's been helping me kinda keep track of all of this, so, but I'll, uh, later today, I'll send that out to everybody, and you can either use it for bedtime reading, or, or just read it and be totally, uh.
Mesmerized.
Mesmerized, there you go, that's the word. If there's any, any questions? I do have a contract here, but I had Jody put it on the agenda for next time, it's for a legal services contract with Roy Brindis, which I'm glad he's willing to do another year.
I thought he was retiring.
I thought so too, so I'm glad, get this letter, I'm glad he's looking to.
Who's that?
Roy Brindis. Roy Brandis.
Oh, he's not retiring?
According to that, he's willing to go another year. So we better, better get it on the agenda and sign it before he changes his mind. But.
Laurie retired, she probably did what Beth did with me, putting him back to work, keeping him out of ours.
Well, that's possible. That's possible.
Beth's a smart woman.
He does a lot of good work for us in juvenile and probate.
Rory's a good man.
Yep, yep. That brings us up to public comment. Anyone wish to address the Board at this time?
I would.
Well, of course, Bob. Good morning.
Good morning. I would, first, you made out some points, I was trying to listen to a lot of this stuff. This morning, or just a little bit ago, you mentioned, how are we going to save money? You know, again, why do we have all these damnable millages? We continuously put out millage after millage. The cost to the taxpayer, enormous. Now, if we went down and found $18,000 to put out some paperwork, that's one thing. How much does it cost our townships? Costly. We're still having millages. We mentioned that to Julie Gaines sometime months ago, I think it was, and she said, hey, we need to look into this. One way to save that money, we could save a lot of money, we had three, we could really push and save some money. The other one is on the ambulance services. I don't know if you guys have looked at the dedicated, that I think, the REU has been put allotted to the Hillsdale Hospital, where they are allowed to then take whatever they want and take off, I don't know if anyone's hear from that, but they take off and, you know, you go to Borges, or you go to Ann Arbor, or you go whatever. Is there a set amount of money that we have to reimburse them? Or are they going to get paid in full, including all the millages that incurred in that as well? You know, when other companies do that, they just say, well, if you're within a certain range, you get this amount. So value-wise, I'm looking at who's going to be called upon. I understand GP, or the GPS system is not on all the buses that's used, or the emergency services. So we didn't find out if someone's in the location when someone else is out. And making sure that they call in saying, hey, we're not available, so the REU is someplace else, or housing dedicated runs out of that Hillsdale Hospital seems to be the only course that, you know, making the money, you know, that's more money, but we're paying, and we're paying for it. We don't get that emergency in. I guess the other was, is coming back to you, young lady, just welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
I'm interested in what your background is, where you came from as far as, I'll put it this way, I guess, your performances were in the other areas that you had covered in your application in that sense, and what you stated here on the podium. And so some of that is, to, I'm going to try to say is, try to dispel some of the rumor stuff that always gets started. And so I'm just looking in to see where, you know, your job performances were. Some of the things that have come up, it needs to be justifiable first. So please don't just ignore all those things that come around first, and don't let us bother you. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'll try to find something new.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wish to address the Board?
Thank you. My name is Crystal Pollard from Wheaton Township, and I'd like to bring up issues about what Emrata did on winter binds. The first question that I'd like to ask is, with the Commissioner's job, is it to enact and administer local ordinances? Is that, is that part of the Commissioner's job?
It's a definition.
It's a definition? Okay. Then if an ordinance, if they go by base of evidence of illegal ordinances, do you go back to the original ordinance? If there was an illegal ordinance enacted in a township, do you go back to the original ordinance normally?
Just so you understand our rules, we cannot, during public comment, respond to questions.
Okay, okay. The petition that was presented by our attorney, which talked about the May 17, 2018 planning commission, it was enacted illegally by their own admission through minutes of the meetings. Okay? If you look at the minutes of the meetings, they adjourned the meeting, everybody filed out, we have affidavits from those people, and then they voted on this ordinance. This ordinance needs to go back to the original ordinance, they need to do it right, or whatever. They need to go back to that. Another thing they did was, the person who motioned the ordinance was the person who has a contract and two winter binds. That's conflict of interest. That's another reason why you have to go back to it. And we, like, like you said, we have an attorney and stuff, but it is costing us, the community, a lot of money to fight this when it should actually be, you know, a county issue. The township is really small, it's poor, and they're just forcing this, the big winter bind company, who's a multi-billion dollar company, is just forcing this. And that's what they look for, is they look for townships that are poor, and they just put money into it a little bit, and then they push it through. They've already sold this to Consumers Energy, as you probably know that, right? They sold it for $250 million, everyone's going to get a rate increase, and it's not even here yet. And it's done illegally. And I'd like to see if the Commissioners would attend the township meeting tonight and find out why are they doing all these illegal acts every time they meet? And they won't even town, they won't even talk to us, people of the township, they won't even acknowledge us. We sent a petition to them, and there's only Board of Appeals, they said, well, they have conflict of interest, we can't hear that. They don't, they can't put people on there without conflict of interest to give us a hearing, they don't even want that. And we're kind of fed up as a, as a community right now, and we have a township. And I'd like to see if the Commissioners would somehow help out, look at the ordinance that was put into place illegally, and then maybe go back and do it right, if it's a possibility that you could do that. I'd really appreciate it, and I thank you for your time. If you have any questions? On the winter bind? No?
Not at this time, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Anyone else wish to address the Board?
Penn Swan, City of Hillsdale. I'm just wondering why the $500,000 is coming out of the general fund and not the sheriff's
Anyone else wish to address the Board?
Jack McLean. I thought I was on the agenda today, but I guess I wasn't actually, I got to read somebody else's agenda, because I didn't see any agendas in place, which I don't know if that's common practice.
They're back on that, we're good, they just got used up. Okay.
I guess, seeing as I come up here today, I would like to be on the next agenda, I guess, seeing as I didn't get put on this one. My other question is, and I know you can't answer me, but I only see four Commissioners here, but I hear stuff passing five to zero.
Julie's on the phone.
You can vote on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We don't, as Bruce indicated, we don't interact, but I will answer that question because Julie is here on the phone.
Okay, I was kind of under the impression that you had to be present in order to vote. You can, you can be in the discussions and everything, but you can't legally vote. That's my question.
As long as there's a quorum present.
Okay. I would like to be on the agenda, I know you can't answer that.
Get with me after the meeting, please. So, thank you.
I guess my other question is, why wasn't I on this agenda?
I was never contacted.
You didn't confirm, you were going to get back hold of me to confirm, and you never did. So I didn't put you on.
I thought you, you said I couldn't be on the 4th, I could be on the 12th, I said, okay, I thought that was a confirmation.
I must have had a miscommunication, I'm sorry.
Please stick around, and we can talk about it some more. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Board? Thank you all for coming. Additional business, Bruce?
The $500,000 for the deputy is not the sheriff's responsibility, it's workers' comp. Workers' comp is carried by the county for everybody. So if any county employee gets hurt, they're covered under the workers' comp policy. So that's why it's coming out of the general fund, not a particular department, because that's handled through the Commissioner's budget.
Correct.
And workers' comp.
Thank you. Bruce?
Thank you. Just a little on, when we talk about making right choices, and we're all human, we make, we do trial and error, and I believe when we make choices, when it comes down to yearly enrollment and insurance in place, there are some things that we look at, if the insurance has high deductible or low deductible. I know mine has a high deductible through my husband, and so I dread getting sick. I have never in my past heard a, over a $7,000 deductible. So it frightens me to hear a deductible could be that much in case of any kind of horrific accident. So this is, again, news to me, you learn as you go. So again, I think I would like to say that as County Commissioners, when we make those choices in regards with asserting ourselves the right amount of general fund, and not just to look at if there would be any trouble that we would foresee in the future, whether it's health, or an accident, or anything to do with our employees, or lawsuits, or anything, I personally believe general fund is a separate entity where you keep building, and I believe in having an increased general fund so that we don't start to look up to the state, that, okay, what next? Because here, when we look from the outside to the in, I believe then we get a bigger picture and a better picture of what our finances are. And I believe it's critical that we need to scrutinize some of the finances here and there to just start off a year next year in a more stronger and a solid way. Thanks.
Thank you. Julie?
Well, I would just like to welcome Emrata to the Board, and tell her that I would forward to working with her and all the Commissioners in the future, together as a team, to do just such things as she just mentioned. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Something I had wrote down, which I'll throw in at this time, my discussion with Mr. Bernstein on the opioid lawsuit, when we joined nationwide, we were about number 200 that had jumped in as far as municipalities. Currently, there's approximately 2,400. So that's, just shows that we weren't wrong by getting involved, you know, more and more have sought this out. And he did indicate there may, and I stress the word may, there may be some implications to that, because some of this, the way it's playing out, the early, early adopters may...
Get money.
Get more, or get money sooner than the ones that have jumped in late. So there may be some benefits, but I do stress the word may. So, because he said there's way too many loose, you know, loose strings yet. So that's all I have, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Excuse me, go ahead, go ahead. Bye, Julie.
Bye, Julie, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Bye-bye, Julie.
Bye-bye.
I wonder if you charged your signature, because you need to be dates in there, or specific people in there?
I took a picture.
And now, today you actually can share it.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to actually get somebody listed in that regulation?
No, no, people can share, and that's the kind of...
Okay. Share firm? Sorry, no, I'm reviewing.
Obviously, there are...
Okay, thanks.